I think we should probably try to get this meeting underway. I think everyone here has travel arrangements, lunch arrangements. So this is the NSS Town Meeting. It's your chance to ask us questions about policy, about what happened to my request for an Aunt Amma's T-shirt, all the niggles and queries about what's happening at Headquarters, what we understand is happening in national space policy. This is your hour to ask us questions. I will introduce some people on the podium, just in case there's anyone here who doesn't know them. I'm Pat Dash, Dash, the Executive Director. This is Dan Brandonstein, our President, and Kirby Eiking, the Chairman of the Executive Committee at the end of the podium. And I suggest if you have a question, you just raise your hand and raise your voice and we'll take it from there.
What kind of perception are we getting either from the major political parties or from individual candidates towards informational information, position papers, that type of thing?
Can I ask, I can't read your badge from here. Can you identify yourself when asked? Can everyone identify themselves when they ask a question so we know who we're talking to? The question relates to the political parties and the candidates, so we're focusing the question primarily on the 2000 election.
Correct.
And that's a very good question because I think I have made a point in talking to the membership of saying that we are going to talk to the candidates and we are going to try and get a space message into the 2000 election. What I found is we really tried to start a little bit early. We have been talking to the candidates' offices, we have talked to some of the candidates themselves, and their answer is, "Do you have money? If not, come back the beginning of next year, then we'll have something to say on the issues, maybe." It really is a cutthroat business. This year, they are just interested in raising money. The parties are just playing some rather irritating, difficult games in Congress because they are already positioning and working towards the 2000 election, which is making it rather difficult to move things ahead in Congress. But they likewise are not taking positions on space particularly. The one piece of encouraging news in all of this is that Governor George Bush here in Texas is getting some questions, particularly related to the interest in developing a spaceport here in Texas. And he has a couple of political advisers, maybe more. And he called up one member of our Board of Governors, who I won't name, and said, "I need help. I have political advisers, but they know engineering and technical stuff, they don't know policy. I need help." And so we have a meeting with Governor Bush early in June, a week or 10 days from now, and we are going to give him a space platform. I don't know how much of it he will take on board. So that I take as progress. And we keep knocking on the door of the other candidates, and if they're not ready to start talking policy by fall, we'll start hammering on the door, and there will be a role for each of you. We need to do this not only with the candidates, but at the local level, and we'll be developing materials and a campaign to involve you all in helping to get the message out. So everyone who is prepared to go visit a candidate in a home office, or if you're coming to DC, in DC, let your chapter leader know, or we'll give you ways to let us know. We want to involve everybody and we want to make a difference. I think many of you know that when we went into the last presidential campaign, we did the usual Headquarters exercise of asking every candidate for a position on space. And our previous experience had been that they would all give us an opinion, even though some had to say, "Whoops, give me a week," because they hadn't thought about space at that time. This last time around, we only got two opinions on space. Only two of them would give us a position. The others, and obviously I'm talking kind of early on when there's quite a field out there, the others said, "Space is not an issue. I'm not wasting my time. Go away." And we didn't get a position from them. We hope to get something from every candidate. That's my target this time around. Our future is too important for our candidates to ignore space. Sorry, I've gone on. Does anyone want to add anything? Great.
And I'd like to add to that, we have activist, one of which is available in this room right now, Jonathan over here, John Strickland. Several of these people have been involved in getting into political party primaries and delegates. They've got items added to the planks within their political parties, and that's something that everybody can have the opportunity to get involved with, or promote with somebody who's going to be a delegate, to support him with our positions. And Bush, Mary Ann Dyson, you've done that too, right?
Yeah.
And several people have done that. It can happen, and it's very effective. Also, is it possible that when a candidate gives us a reply that, "I'm not interested in space," that we could say, quote, "An Astro" somewhere? That would be interesting.
We're planning to conduct this via the website this time, so we will start compiling files on the candidates and information as we gather it, and we'll share it with you there.
Yeah, I might also add that there's quite a few members in the society that are quite high up in the Libertarian Party as well, so have very good access to that.
One thing that we did last time that worked very well at Democratic National Convention, it doesn't, it's too late in the game at the presidential level, but many of your congressmen people are part of these convention, Republican or Democratic, and visibility there raises the issue. And of course, with the Democratic Convention, we used to have sort of captive audience, so it worked well. If we can do the same thing in Philadelphia and San Diego, it raises the issue there at the lower levels, the House and Senate.
All right. Yeah, I'd like to mention that the Republican State Convention is going to be in Houston next year, and we're going to have booths there. I'm pretty sure our chapter will be arranging that, anybody who's interested in getting booths at their state conventions. We need to know where those state conventions are located, and what cities they're in, and then we can definitely send out a mail to those people and get them activated to help follow up on the process. So we need the data coming in to us to find out when those are. Sometimes it's hard to point out when the offices are going to happen and when those things are going to happen, so get the information out of the people. It's not that hard to be a delegate, it really isn't, especially in precinct level, precinct, district, or different state, and we can help you do that. It only takes a commitment of about two years.
You've been doing this since 1988, and one of our members actually has made a handbook that explains the steps you have to do, and it's very important.
Stand up, Tom, John. Stand up.
I support Mary Ann in this, if we could do this all around the country. It takes three precincts, it takes three precincts to get it to the county level, it takes three counties to get it to the state level, it takes three states presumably to get it to the national level. Last year, somebody, I don't know what state it came from, got one of our planks into the national level, plank for the Republican Party, I think it was with the reusable vehicles. And the other facet of this is that if you have, you need somebody at the national level or the state level to talk to the Issues Committee, which is separate from the other committees. Usually we meet a few days or a week earlier than the main convention to throw us out the issues. So if you have three states, say, supporting a particular plank, and you have somebody there at the Issues Committee who can explain any objections that come up, you have a very good chance of getting it through into that committee. That's very important.
Dan is asking how widely available that handbook is, and does it have a good distribution system in place?
We had it placed on the web at one point. I'm not sure if that site is still available, and I've got to check and make sure that we can get it onto the web somehow.
Can you check it's up to date and then work with me to put it on the web?
I think that, I think it's pretty much up to date, yeah. It was just a couple, a few years ago. I don't think much has changed.
Is that what you're talking about?
No, this is specifically how to get into and work with precinct and local and county system of each political party. And of course, this is based on our knowledge from Texas and how it works, and the structures may be slightly different in different states, but the whole thing is probably pretty similar in the different states. We've been doing this since '88, so we have a reasonable amount of experience doing it. As to the interpersonal relationships, that's up to everybody.
I don't think I see Peter here, but maybe we can work with the Chair of the Chapter's Assembly to try and coordinate distribution of that for people who need hard copy. And maybe it should go at the chapter's website.
It's possible that we can give it property to them so they can put it out.
Further questions?
My name is Dale Parrish. My experience in the past has been when you ask an elected official what his position is on X, Y, and Z, they won't know where you're coming from. And if I say, "I'm a member of the National Spaces Society," oh, space is very important, isn't it? My perception would be that the NSS would want its members to identify itself, but I'd like to know objectively, is it better to be a John Q. citizen so that you're not perceived as having a special agenda when you ask a pro-space question, or is it better to say, "I'm an NSS member of the party, and here's where we are?"
That's a very good question. NSS is seen by most politicians as representing the space-interested public in this country, and I think similarly in Australia for NSSA. So I would encourage you to identify yourself as a member of NSS, but then explain to them that our agenda is broad, and they will possibly, especially if they're short of time, say, "So what is it you want?" Because everyone who walks through their door wants something. And so you need to have your priorities. If you say, "We just want to go to space," they'll look blank, and that's why we have the Policy Committee working in overdrive at the moment to really clarify what the priorities of the society are. But each of you, as a member of the public who's interested in space, has a group of priorities, and you should just verbalize what is most important to you. And my other advice would be, it's nice to meet the representative or the senator, but if you have time to call ahead, or if you can get to one of the relevant directories and find out who their staffer is, who handles space matters, that's the person to get to because that's the person who will determine what that representative or senator says about space.
Pat, on that note, is this staff person dedicated to space? It may vary from congressman, person to congressman.
If there are a committee that has particular responsibility in that area, they will almost certainly have someone who's dedicated or who covers space and other area. But there will always be someone who will stand up and take the responsibility.
Is that something we can get identified and made public so we don't have to seek them out, or if we find them, we can let Headquarters know and they can...
I'm assuming that we're talking about people going to home area offices for the most part, in which case we can't help you. If anyone is coming to Washington, we can.
That's what we're talking about. You actually were quite still.
Apparently, unless you have space in your community, like in Chicago, the home offices don't have one. They will give you a number to call in Washington to their office there.
I think what we're talking about is like I said, with PR, you find the right staffer to work with. And so instead of saying, "Well gee, who is it?" You know, we can just say, "Call them to talk to Joe Blow," is it?
That's what I'm trying to say. Maybe I didn't put it very well.
So you're saying you can't find them?
No, no, you find out, and it's quite easy to find out. And a call to the Congressman's office with a simple inquiry, "I want to talk to Senator so-and-so's space staffer," will connect you. They're obliged to do that.
I think it would also be helpful if you have a website, you have a summary, you need to reach the...
It would be nice to have, I can't promise that we have the wherewithal to put it up there. We do have the information, obviously, for our own use at Headquarters, for the people we contact frequently.
From my experience also, you just click on the website of the particular congressman, and they normally have their staff listed there and, you know, what their specialty is, I mean, you know, legislative affairs, science and technology, et cetera, et cetera. So that's probably the, that way, you know, you know who you're going to see or who you want to talk with, and that's probably, it may not be true for all of them, but I've tapped in about four or five of them, and they're all pretty much set up that way.
Mary Ann? I'd like you to speak a little bit about what we're going to be doing at Unispace, who particularly is going to be there, what positions we might bring up, and when we'll be hearing back about what's happening here.
Okay, Unispace III. Does everyone here know what Unispace is? Okay. Unispace III is the Third United Nations Conference on the Peaceful Uses of Outer Space. The second conference was held back in 1984. So that immediately triggers the question, "Well, so what do these conferences do?" They obviously haven't needed one for rather a long time. And the answer appears to be, and I'm still unraveling this for myself, that there hasn't been a particular UN focus on outer space, but guess what? The light bulb has lit up. They're realizing that space has changed over the last two or three years, that it is becoming an accessible resource for third-world countries, or if not accessible yet, a resource they should use for monitoring and environmental monitoring and various other remote sensing applications. And that an increasing number of countries are now getting involved in space, and they see that space is no longer a government enterprise, but it is a big business area as well. So it's a recognition that space is a big part of our future, which I think is a major thing for us to focus on. Also, remember that the last time they met, we were still in the Cold War era, so the whole global environment has changed since the last meeting. So this is regarded as a big deal. The US has been rather slow to catch on to this. I think Kirby has seen rather more interest in Australia than we have, and I know the Europeans are much more engaged with it, but I think we're running to catch up now. Who is going from NSS and what are we going to be working on there? Ambassador Ed Finch and Dr. Amanda Moore are our two standing representatives. We do have NGO status, non-governmental organization status at the UN, and they will be our primary representatives. I will be joining them there, as will Bob McCall from our Board of Governors. And at Unispace, we will be putting papers into two law symposia, and we'll be holding a reception, which will be our real opportunity to network with UN leadership. And we have Ambassador Finch to thank for that. He is footing the bill for the whole effort for us. And at that reception, Bob McCall will give a short talk, using some of his artwork, talking about the potential of our future in space, as a sort of lightweight, pleasant evening with hors d'oeuvres and drinks, but focusing them on where we think they could go. The particular issues we're going to be addressing are property rights issues coming out of our conference last December, and space debris, which you all know is a primary interest of Ambassador Finch's, on which he's published very widely. Further to that, we did make a submission to the State Department of material for inclusion in the US delegate package that will go in. We, as an NGO, will be putting our own package into the meeting, but it is felt that you have increased status if you go in as part of the national package. I'm told by State that our wording about needing to replace the Moon Treaty is going to be included, and maybe some other things we pointed to in the need to establish a legal framework for the sort of space enterprise that we believe will be in place in the future. The idea that you don't want to have chaos, that chaos legally will be a disincentive to the growth of entrepreneurial business in space, and that it is advisable to think ahead and try to set down a legal framework to work within, so people know the ground In addition to that, we were told just about a week ago that there will, in addition to people from government, there will be representatives of three organizations within the US delegation. One from the Planetary Society, one from NSS, and one from the AIAA. And our delegate will be Ambassador Finch, as are the delegate. But because he's in New York, there's going to be a meeting at the White House for US delegates on June 8th, and so I will represent us there. So we not only have our own delegation, but we actually are represented in the US delegation. And Kirby, do you want to say anything about Australian involvement? And you haven't decided whether you'll send someone, you haven't told him if he's coming here.
Thanks, Pat. It's one of the interesting things that came out of the Property Rights Conference last December. Quite clearly, the Moon Treaty was a relevant issue, and Australia, for reasons unknown to the people in the industry in Australia at the moment, is one of, I think, eight signatories to the Moon Treaty. So we therefore had a certain amount of leverage if we could actually get one of the signatories to the Moon Treaty to renounce or cancel their participation in the treaty, which actually takes a year to give notification of withdrawing from the treaty. That would be sent as a very powerful sign that the Moon Treaty was now an outdated institution and should be removed. So we have been working with the Australian Government, both through the National Space Society and Australian Space Industry Chamber of Commerce. As a result of having brought the subject to the Australian Government's attention, they are now looking at it, and we have been specifically invited to join the Australian Government delegation to Unispace, so we're looking to hopefully have, we have to actually have an NSS participant in the Australian delegation as well. So this is, again, just a reflection of how this part of space development is a truly international endeavor, and how it's valuable for us to try to find ways to influence the international community on subjects like this.
Pat, do we, and by that I don't mean NSS, I mean the space community that's unhappy with the Moon Treaty, have in the works or imminent the kind, the exact, a document we would like to see substituted for if we had our wishes, or are we still in the position of saying, "We don't like the Moon Treaty, we just ought to be something else?"
We did submit some talking points on this to the State Department, and we will take them forward, and I'm not sure I can adequately recap them for you because they were prepared by some of our lawyers, by Scott Pace and Glenn Reynolds, and I wouldn't like to misrepresent them. I can share that with you. So the way things work in the UN, apart from being glacially slow, is you start by very gently giving them the reasons why you think something should be changed, and just suggesting a direction they start to think in. So this is rather frustrating for activists who tend to know where they want to go and want to go there very fast. So that's why I say that their language and their suggestions are kind of rather padded, but primarily we are suggesting that we would like to replace the Moon Treaty. So at this meeting, we need to feed and nurture the idea that the Moon Treaty itself is an anachronism. Not many people have addressed this recently, and we have to explain why, and that's really the step we're at. Mary Ann, you also asked, "When would you know what we'd achieved?" I think seeing outcome is going to be slow. We're going into it with a view to a possible international conference hosted by one of the UN committees, probably in late 2000, to discuss the Moon Treaty specifically. And I think if we come out of Unispace III with a commitment to that conference, we would probably be very pleased. What else will come? This is a new experience for us, and I will be happy to report back when I'm back. It's going to be a very busy time for me. I'm going to be down here the 15th and 16th of July for our lunar base symposium, which I hope some of you who are local will be able to come to. Then I'm involved at a national level in the Apollo 730th Anniversary celebrations on the 20th. I head to Vienna for Unispace the night of the 20th, and I might not be talking straight by the time I come back, so you'll have to give me a little bit of time. But we will get a very full report from Ed Finch and Amanda, and I think we'll probably have to meet and digest that and see what it means for us. Dan?
Yeah, a question for Kirby. Do you remember Helen Wasser and I were discussing another nation that was interested in questioning the Moon Treaty? I'm just curious, has anything come of that? I believe you were in that discussion.
Are you saying identifying another country?
There was another country that was questioning it. It may have been the Netherlands or something like that.
Ah, yes, that's right. The Netherlands had raised it in some preliminary discussions, and Pat's adding that Italy has as well. My understanding, and I think this was being discussed in other quarters rather than with myself, I was sort of being copied on some email relating to it. I think it has come up through some relatively routine review of the Netherlands' participation in treaties and monitoring of treaties. I think it's part of the governmental process when there's an event of this sort coming up, their Foreign Affairs Department or whatever sits down and reviews these things. We, excuse me, it takes some heart from the fact that it has at least been flagged by their government and is being examined. I'm not exactly sure how much we can read into their intent to be part of the debate on it, but at least it is worth noting that they have noted the fact that it's on the agenda.
Okay, I was just curious if anybody has been in contact with them.
On...
Yes, I think there's been email traffic, but I'm not really familiar beyond that. We did have a working group that came out of the Property Rights Conference last year. I surmise that it would be the working group that would be taking note of that and acting on it in any particular way.
Having both NSS represented as its... Having both NSS represented as its own organization and in the U.S. and the Australian delegation, will that have any beneficial effects outside of the UN in terms of international recognition or status changes?
Status within the UN?
Or outside of the UN and the UN conference?
I think everyone going to Unispace sees it as a major networking opportunity. I'm going hunting for potential for chapters in places we don't have chapters, international chapters. I think we'll see a groundswell of interest from countries that are just starting to see the benefits of space. And that, to me, seems like fertile territory for introducing NSS. So at the organizational level, I think it has that potential. I think, I hope to meet a lot of new individuals that I'll be able to continue to talk to on space issues and maybe bring some of them into NSS as well.
I'd just quickly add a comment to that, too. Being possibly the only group with knowledge on a subject like this that you can take to your government, certainly in the case of Australia, that really raises your stocks. When they have to come to a public nonprofit group for reliable and useful information at a major international forum, that's very valuable.
And I would add that since U.S. input to the U.S. delegation has been limited, when I went to the State Department to deliver our package, I thought I was dropping by and I was kept there to discuss it for an hour and a half. So I think general disinterest on the part of the U.S. in space matters is actually to our benefit. I think we're playing a more significant role in the U.S. input than I would have expected to.
This is for Kirby. Kirby, maybe Michael James could talk to some of the other chapters in other countries and other people he's talked to that are in the process of considering forming other chapters. And by the way, you know, Michael James is the International Chapters Coordinator for those who don't know him, in Australia. So maybe he could talk to them about the approach for their government in Unispace.
We'll certainly try to do that. Unfortunately, as Pat has mentioned, sort of the pace with UN affairs tends to be rather glacial. So we probably needed to have started some time ago. It doesn't hurt for us to be raising it, though, and that's a very good point. We'll certainly discuss it with Michael. Even if their governments become aware of it, sort of after the fact or just before the fact, it's probably useful. So that's a very good point. We'll cast it onto Michael.
Karen? And just on that point, it's just become probable that we'll have a person in Germany starting the National Space Society of Germany, and they're going to be working with the Australians to overcome any issues that they've already solved.
Being a member of the space industry, I'll bet money that the AIA representative is in favor of replacing or killing the Moon Treaty. Do we have any sense of the Planetary Society? Do they feel strongly one way or the other?
They didn't send anybody to our conference in December, and I have not heard anything out of them. I haven't talked to Lou about it, I admit.
Cynthia Price with Clear Lake Chapter. This is the quarter-century anniversary of the National Space Society and in line of conversation of the international chapters and the international activities. Is perhaps, is it time for NSS to look at a name change? The world has changed as hot as an international organization, although I think with global communications, even the word "international" will soon be rare or caked. Perhaps something like the Space Bearing Society, which is a bold name, but yet succinctly states our mission.
It's certainly not the first time this issue has come up. And in fact, it was our projected participation in Unispace III, which we were looking at a year or more ago, which started to spur some more concrete, serious discussion of the name issue. Of course, the name of the society goes back to the merger of L-5 and NSI. And in fact, all of the chapters in Australia are called Space Frontier Societies. It's Sydney Space Frontier Society. Because at the time, we, of course, couldn't conceive that the name National Space Society would be chosen in the vote because we were an international organization. The issue came up in the context of the National Space Society trying to move up from being a non-governmental organization to having permanent observer status with the UN. One of the points that the UN made to us was that we need to be a truly international organization. Part of that is the name. The other part is philosophical in sort of truly having a philosophy that says that we are an international organization. And also, hand in hand with that, is actually having the members to back it up. And at this point in time, we have a very small, well, relatively speaking, I think it might be up towards, is it approaching 10% now or is it still down towards 5%?
It's definitely climbing.
It's climbing towards a 10% international membership. Now, you couldn't really truly call that an international organization. It's more a U.S.-centric group with some international attachments. I think the appropriate point will come probably in the next couple of years where a name change becomes important. We have a committee that's been looking at it, rendered some comments back in December. We must, however, be cognizant of the fact that, at this point in time, the U.S. certainly has leadership in a lot of the areas, particularly where government spending is required to move us into space. If that is the case, then it becomes important, where we have the recognition of the National Space Society name, that we not lose that, that we not lose our influence in what is probably our most important market. Now, the importance of that marketplace is declining, and therefore, we are moving to a point where we do need to be a truly international organization. We will continue to look at that, and I think the committee will continue to look at some of the issues. And unfortunately, they're issues like tax status and things like that that have to be addressed. They're non-trivial. But I think you're quite right that at some point in time, we will cross a threshold where we need to be a truly international organization, both in philosophy, membership, and name.
Is any other name being considered other than Space?
I wouldn't say anything is being seriously considered. Various things are being debated. We even looked at the possibility of having an umbrella name, which was virtually an organization in name only, and we would just have some stationery at headquarters for dealing with international activities, which, because we're registered in DC, is something you can do. But this is a highly emotional topic, I found, with the membership. And no one even liked that idea. So I won't even go as far as sharing the name we weren't considering. This is an ongoing discussion, but it is your society. And I would encourage you to make input to board members on what, if you would like a name change or not like a name change, and to give us any suggestions. I think the second column I wrote in Ad Astra, when I became editor, I suggested that it should only be a matter of time till we become the Intergalactic Space Society. Let's go the whole way right from the start.
Well, if there is a society that's fine, just that I'd just like to suggest that Space Society is all inclusive and that includes NASA.
The worry about Space Society was SS, the initials.
Good point. Pat, two things. One, I hope they'll buy us a site. Two, since Dale, I'm on from Belfast, asked this question prior question, I'd like to ask him when he will start processing our...
Well, actually, I have a list that I'm supposed to start calling, so I may be doing it later this summer.
All right.
And just a comment on what Pat said, that if anybody does have input on a name change, Tim McEgan is the Chair of that committee, I'm on it, and Greg Rucker's on it. We'll be glad to hear from you.
L-5.
L-5, I come for L-5.
I'm flexible. I'm every year in Chicago. Space Frontier, L-5.
Well, if there are no further questions. No one has a question for Dan. This is bad.
Okay, so no more questions. I'll wrap it up. But one more time, just a very hearty thanks to everyone that was involved in preparing and executing this tremendous convention. And also, thanks to everyone who came to reap the benefit of the efforts of the people that put it on. Thanks very much. There's a lot to do between now and Tucson, but the next big get-together will be about a year from now, I guess, in Tucson. Thanks again.